Okay. We'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome you to the Salas County Planning Commission's Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations or petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Director of Planning on my right, and on my far left, the planters assigned to tonight's petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card in the, on the table outside at the exit of the chambers. By filling out a card, we will be able to link you to a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the County Council. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at the next executive meeting on March 6th. Additional comments, letters, and petitions committed to the Department of Planning within one week of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@salascountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following procedures. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition are with concern. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Persons speaking as individuals will be allowed two minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, the petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, we will ask for a show of hands of those in favor and those in opposition are with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. Purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC 04-23, Steve Young.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, it's PC 04-23, Steve Young, requesting a change of zoning from C2 to R7 for 0.56 acres located west side of New Hampshire Avenue, approximately 180 feet north of Graboy Road. As you can see from the site outlined in red and from the county context map, this is in South County. This is the land use map. As you can see, there are several single-family residential homes along Graboy. There are some commercial corridor areas there with offices and retail facilities. This is a larger aerial view with the site outlined in red. This is looking west on the site at the public hearing sign. This is looking west at the whole structure. This is looking east directly across the property. This is looking north up New Hampshire Road. This is looking north along a vacant lot next door to the property. This is looking west along the northern side of the property. This is looking north along the back of the site. This is looking west along the southern side of the property, heading more towards Graboy. This is looking south. This is looking south up New Hampshire Road on towards Graboy. And next, I'll let the petitioner come and present their hearing.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Young, when you advance the clicker, you'll kind of just aim it towards this door right here?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Steve Young. I'm a owner of CYY Properties. We purchased this building at eighty-nine fifteen, eighty-nine nineteen, New Hampshire. And we went to get, had some improvements that we wanted to get done, so we went and got permits. When we found out that it was not zoned properly, it was zoned C2. So, we decided with the help of the planners to apply for a zoning change. So, that's why we're here. The building was, was built in 1966, and it was and has been a 12-unit apartment complex since it was built. I have no idea why it was zoned, the way it was zoned when it was purch, when it was built. But as you can see, it's definitely a 12-unit apartment complex. Our goal is to improve the building. We've got some permits out there, but we need to solve the zoning issue before we can move forward with that. So, this is evidence. We did some searching as to when the building was built, and it was built in, again, 1966. And that's pretty much it. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Question, does anyone? You are still using it?
Yes, sir. It's got 12 apartments in it, and they're all rented.
Anyone else? Pretty simple, isn't it?
Mr. Hillsinger, may I ask a question? Can you just describe briefly some of the, some of the improvements that you're going to be making to the site?
Uh, yes. Let me go back to here. So, we're going to put in, we want to put in new balconies. The balconies are old and outdated, so we want to put in new balconies. And then we want to redo the concrete around the building and the asphalt. Just, it's cracked, it's old, it looks terrible. So, not major improvements, but I think that'll really in, make the building much better. We've already been renovating and updating apartments as they move, as people move out, but this was mostly exterior work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
At this time, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is anyone who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing no one, we do not need rebuttal. So, we'll take a show of hands, those in favor of this petition. Record show. But the record show three. Those opposed are with concern. Let the record show none. And that concludes this hearing. Thank you. And with that, we'll go on to the next item, which is PC 05-23, Best Detailing LLC.
PC 05-23, Best Detailing LLC, is a request for a conditional use permit in the M1 District for 0.83 acres located on the south side of Trenton Avenue, approximately 200 feet east of Galt Industrial Boulevard. As you can see, this site is located in mid-county, and the site is outlined in red for you on the aerial. This site is surrounded by office warehouse uses, as well as some low retail uses as well. Again, here's a larger aerial with the site outlined in red. And again, you can see the office warehouse uses surrounding it. This is looking south on to the public hearing sign. This is looking south onto the site. This is looking north directly across the street from the site. This is looking east. This is looking west. This is looking south further into the site. And the site in question is closer to the green edge of grass next to the dumpster. This is looking east directly onto the site that is in question. This is looking west across the parking lot to its neighbors. And now, we'll have the petitioner.
Thank you so much. Well, good evening, and thanks for having me. Before I get started, I just want to give a big shout out and a thank you to Mel Wilson and her team. It's not all the time that you run into a public servant that's willing to go the extra mile and walk you through a process that you don't know. So, thank you to you and your team. I'm here to talk to you about best detailing. Hopefully, this is an easy permit application for you, but this is an automotive detailing company that we just started.
I apologize, Mr. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Joshua Travis, Citizen. There we go. So, Best Detailing, Automotive Detailing Company that we started, located in mid-county, and we're currently leasing a spot that's perfect for doing detailing services in it, but per the current zoning on the lot that we're on, automotive services, which our business is classified under county ordinance, isn't allowed. So, I'm simply asking you for permission to hand wash vehicles and clean their insides. But we'll go a little bit deeper into, into what it is that we're talking about. So, the bottom line up front, that's it. This is the leased building. Nothing to be built, no development to be done. We're taking the site simply as is. I'm a military officer by trade, so I'm going to give you a bottom line up front. Then, I kind of told you who we are. I'll tell you a little bit more about what we do, and then we'll dive into the site itself. So, again, the bottom line is I'm asking your approval of our conditional use permit, looking at 10-762 Trenton Avenue, and we're this place there on the right. And again, we're looking for in-shop automotive detailing services. It's that simple. As far as best detail in itself, again, new company. Detailing is something I got into after my first deployment in Afghanistan in 2016. It was a re-grounding exercise for me. After three tours out there and kind of thinking about something to do that I think could give back and give people a sense of pride and joy, my wife said, "Well, why don't you do something that you know?" And so, we started this deal up here. And so, we're out looking to make the luxury, that feeling, that pride and joy that you get from a freshly cleaned car, easy and affordable for everybody. Not to insult anybody's intelligence, automotive detailing, the art and craft of making your car go from post-road trip, full of crumbs, to feeling like brand-new. And if you're anything like me, there's just, there's something about that feeling of not just taking care of what you have, but having it feel nice for you and your family that's worth investing in. Now, I'm guilty, like I'm sure everybody in here, of going to an automatic car wash, which are fantastic and they're easy, but this is not that. This is not that in terms of site, in terms of excess chemical use, excess water use, et cetera. This is a very focused, detailed detailing service. So, the conditional use permit is required. As I explained, the current site that we're in is not zoned in a way that allows us to do what it is that we're looking to do in our space. And as I detail, no pun intended at that time, but as I detail the, the characteristics of our site, you'll see why the current site that we're in is actually perfect for what we're looking to do. Planning military operations, we typically start from the objective area and go out. I'm going to bring you from out and then into the objective area. Looking at the site specifically, we're talking about approximately 1,200 square feet of a larger industrial building that includes office space and warehouse space. As you saw from the intro, from the front, we've got a big, perfect industrial garage door that allows us to get vehicles inside in order to provide quality service. And we've got a service bay of approximately 841 square feet, that office section and the bathroom, and that's pretty much all that, that characterizes the site. And when you look at how we've actually got the site organized, the space is open in order to pull vehicles in and get them cleaned up. Everything from your run-of-the-mill hand car wash to vacuuming the inside of vehicles, wiping down interiors, shampooing seats, even to more advanced services like paint corrections or ceramic coating applications, all that would be done in this space. And per the conditional use permit that's required would be done so legally. So, again, the proposed use details all the services that I kind of just walked through. Our service is by appointment only, which allows for the ease of flexibility in terms of how we manage our staff. So, when we talk about things like parking requirements, the current site actually has, in terms of the requirement for our space, 11.6 parking spots required to the 44 available. Given our by appointment only nature and just the size of our space, we would not exceed what would be the required parking allotment under this conditional use permit, which would be 13.4 spaces, again, to what would be in excess of 30.6 just on the site itself. So, coming back to why we're here, just the approval requests. Again, we request approval of this conditional use permit. And in terms of reasons to approve, again, no additional developments required. This is an existing site that we're already in and just need, or requesting permission to use legally. No invasive service to the community, no influx of traffic that would be a concern in terms of, you know, vehicles or loud noises, et cetera. Again, we're by appointment only. This location perfectly suits our service. In fact, the lot just next to ours, that is the neighbor, the neighbor, neighboring structure that you saw in the intro, is actually owned by the same property owner, and that lot already has a conditional use permit for automotive services on it. And so, this would be a similar conditional use permit just across the dividing line, if you will. No hazmat or industrial risk activity, all the chemicals that we use. We actually use a, one of the quality suppliers out of Colorado, and they specifically design their chemicals to be biodegradable and environmentally friendly, which is something that was really important to us. And then I just kind of highlighted the precedent that's kind of already been set just across the lot with our neighboring structure. With that, gentlemen, that concludes my presentation. Pining your questions?
How heavy of a painting do you go into? You said paint repair?
Yes, sir. So, paint correction specifically, and that's just the use of, familiar with like an automotive polish or a compound. Think of, you know, like the orange goof-off kind of hand wash that's got that gritty stuff in it. Automotive polishes and compounds have polymers much finer than that grit that you feel, but has polymers in it that are designed simply to rub scratches and swirls out of your clear coat. So...
Do you actually apply any paint?
No, sir. No, sir. And that's the...
So, I was getting at is the ventilation system.
Correct. Yeah. So, that's, that's a misnomer with the term paint correction. I wanted to avoid the science, but in detailing, when you're correcting paint, you're not actually doing anything with the paint. You're just hitting the clear coat on top.
And then the drainage for washing the cars in the driveway, adequate the way it is now?
Yes, sir.
That's all I had.
Awesome. Eight-thirty AM to five-thirty PM. Sir, seven days a week.
You do any overnight storage?
No, sir.
So, it's in and out?
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. Our services are built that way, mitigating insurance concerns. But we are insured to do that if, for whatever reason, the job ran over. So, I wouldn't lie to you and say that there's not potential for that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Cheers.
At this time, is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition or with concern? Seeing no one, we do not need rebuttal. And at this time, we'll take a show of hands of those in favor of this petition. You get the vote? Let, let the record show four. Those opposed are with concern. Let the record show none, and that concludes this petition. Thank you. And with that, we'll go to the third item, PC 0623 and PC 07-23.
This is PC 6 and 7-23. As Ms. Kowick is requesting the subject site to be sub, subject, subject site to be reassigned from C8 Commercial District to R6 AA Residential District with planned environmental unit in R6 AA Residential District. The proposed users, the proposed use is multifamily housing. 1.32 acre tract is located on north side of Smizer Station Road, approximately 100 feet west of Smizer East State Drive. From the context map, you can see that the site is located in the South County, and it is outlined in red on, in the aerial. From this land use map, you can see the subject site is closely located to the commercial patch and predominantly surrounded by single-family houses. In this aerial, you can see the subject site is outlined in red, and you can see the high density of residential occupancy. So, this is the public hearing notice, and we are facing north. And this is looking east along Smizer Station Road. And this is facing south across Smizer Station Road. And this is facing west along Smizer Station Road. And this is again facing north, but you can see pretty much the whole site here. And this is facing east. You can see single-family houses right next to the site. And this is facing north along east property line, and this is west property line. We'll listen to the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, Chairman, Members. I'd like to thank you for having us tonight to hear our petition for site-specific zoning, a piece of ground located at seventeen...
What did you state your name?
Oh, sorry. I'm Matt Poston with THD Design Group. We're a civil engineering firm, working with Mr. Meskovic, property owner, on this project. We are here tonight to request site-specific zoning for development of two townhouse, townhome buildings housing 19 units located at 1719 and 1725 Smizer Station Road. The tract of ground is approximately 1.32 acres in size. It is depicted on the context map as being two individual parcels. This is incorrect. The properties actually combined into one individual parcel that has two existing tax identification records. With our development, we will be providing stormwater mitigation for any drainage improvements or increase in drainage. We will do that through MSD with approved BMP practices to reduce water runoff onto adjacent properties. Our building, here, we've got some of the same, same pictures that staff already had. That's looking north into the property. That's looking at the southeast corner of the property, looking north. Our existing condition survey, this shows the property is as one contiguous piece of ground and not two separate. Here's our site plan. As you can see, we have the two buildings, one along the western side of the property, one along the eastern side of the property. You'll have eight units on the west, and you'll have 11 units over on the east. And in the middle, the open area there, that will be our stormwater mitigation facility. We understand there was previous petitions for this property, and heights of building was a concern through most of the residents around. So, we wanted to take that into consideration, not try and build some massive overbearing structure. What I had our survey crews do was go out and locate the roof heights of the existing buildings that are along Smizer Estates, and then compare that to what our proposed roofline elevation would be. There's an outlier in here. We got one house that sits at the corner that's way higher than our building. We got another one that sits down below grade on the north side that's two feet lower. The average comes out to around four foot, but if you take those two out, it's really about out, it's really about two foot lower than the adjacent structures that the proposed roofline will be. Here's a copy of our landscape plan that we submitted. Azur will provide us a certified landscaper to give a more presentable exhibit, if you will. But this is outlining the, the plannings required that we will have. You know, we'll have plannings along the east side as a opaque buffer. Then we'll have roadway plannings per code. And then we'll have the interior parking plannings will be within the actual MSD BMP. It will be approved vegetation by the district. Here again is another site photo, again, just looking directly north into the property. And then here we have views of what the proposed building elevations would be. I think Mr. Meskovic would, would like to speak on the structures themselves. I'm kind of the foundation out kind of guy. So I'll ask him to come up here and he can kind of walk you through what his vision is for the, for the units and, and what he's working with his architects on to.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot to give you this.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, neighbors, thank you so much for coming. I've met with, with a few of them to discuss this project as the news came about with this project. And first, I kind of want to run through some of these photos with you guys. I, I think that some of the concerns will be eliminated just by seeing some of the photos, just because the postcards and everything that goes out is not very clear on what the project is going to look like. So let's see if I can do this right. Okay. So that is a site plan. That's the street view. A little bit closer in right there. So that's your eleven units with no garages is how I'm pretty much going to call it. Now, the center of that, that's, that's our water retention. That's per MSD requirements that Mr. Matt here has put together for us. So that, that won't actually be grass. It's going to be completely landscaped and then there's going to be water, water quality underneath there. What does it go, three or four feet, maybe? I don't know. Whatever MSD requires, that's what we plan on doing as well as St. Louis County. In either case, water quality will not be an issue with this project. So there's a little bit of a close up. We believe that, that this is moving forward, showing some change in progress in the community, keeping them modern, which will also keep, you know, our, our target of, of folks that are going to be moving in here. You know, I kind of where we want them really, and I'll get to that here in just a moment. There's just a little bit of a different, you know, daylight, what it's going to look like. Here's the ones with the garages. So we've got eight units with garages. We feel that this is very important for, for the demand of, of today's world. So this is what we were able to fit on the lot. We simply cannot just put a subdivision on this lot, you know, of residential homes. Either way, that right side would feature two-story homes or something that would back up to the rest of the homes. So being commercial on the left side, being residential on the right side, we felt that the perfect compromise was these nice and attractive townhomes. So there's another close up of a, kind of a sunset type, type of lighting, you know, with, with the garages and then the, the cars parked there. We also got some landscaping. Okay. This is what it looks like at night. So I, I developed a building about close to three years ago now, just up the street, I'm fifty, sixty yards away from there. And all these folks know, know who, what it is. It is commercial. It's an office building and it does have big lights. It's a parking lot. You know, when, when we considered what we were going to build here, we considered the people around it. We considered the community. We are also Fenton residents. I have my family here. My kids are here. They go to Utah schools. We go to the mall shop and get ice cream as well. In fact, we had a bus station created right at our building so that in case we're working late, the kids can be dropped off. So we very much care about what goes, what goes on in the community, which is why we're investing our time, energy and money in building these. So at night, it's not going to be a big layering, you know, deal. It's going to be simply coach lights, a residential feel and look, because we don't have a parking lot that we need to light up. Okay. They're, they're going to have front porch lights. They're going to have back porch lights. Just your regular homes, they just happen to be attached. So if you notice there, up here is what the building on, on the top, what it used to look like on the bottom after I purchased it, you know, was this brand new? Yes, this is a Clayton quality building in Fenton. That's an investment I decided to make. Was it going to lose? Sure. But after a few years, it was going to catch on. And if we want to move up as a community, this is the type of things that, that we have to do. May not be comfortable all at once, but it's what we have to do. So that's another site plan. And then this is what the site normally looks like. It's overgrown. It collects trash. It, it actually, it has a swale right, right in the front of it. You know, there, I sit in my office and all day long, every day for three years now, I've, I'm seeing people walk up and down, go into the mall shop or other businesses, riding bikes, walking their dogs, and they get off my sidewalk, the six-foot sidewalk that I built with my building development. Then they get off that, they walk down the street. So with the new development, there's going to be another sidewalk. And each new development that comes up is going to have a sidewalk, because we're, St. Louis County plans for the future development, correct? So that way it can, you know, it can be much safer for everybody. Again, site plan, as you can see, we, we've kind of put in trees. We have to, we're going to have to, to get a landscape architect to kind of draw it all up for St. Louis County guidelines. And whatever is required is, is what we'll do. But that's kind of the idea. You know, a nice soft residential feel. And that's what the back is going to look like. That this side actually backs to the commercial piece of property, which is only about a ten foot buffer. On the other side, we have thirty feet that's backing up to the residential homes. And then from the fence line to their homes, you know, twenty to thirty feet, you know, I, I don't know exactly, but we plan on, you know, putting in big trees and, you know, whatever, whatever needs to be done. We're flexible on that. So some of the community improvements right there, I'm going to keep those up for you. So the, these are going to be leased. I, I believe that we see them popping up all over the place, especially places like Clayton, Kirkwood, you know, Front Neck. If, if it's good enough for them, why wouldn't it be for Fenton? Okay. So this is the way of life. You know, we live life on the go, you know, and, and people just want to be on the move. The target household income is going to be about a hundred thousand dollars per year on these units, and they're going to be leased for about twenty-two fifty to about twenty-five hundred dollars per month. And we are targeting professionals such as, you know, doctors, lawyers, IT guys. There's an SSM hospital right a mile away. There's travel nurses. There's nurses that, that can all afford these places. And, you know, we, we, we wanted to make them fit into the community, because they'll be paying the same amount as equivalent to about a four hundred thousand dollar mortgage, which is about the average sale price. It's pretty close to that area. Okay. So just another, another few points. Again, we're Fenton residents. We care deeply about this community. Our, our kids go, go to the same places that, that these folks' kids do. This lot has been sitting over forty years, guys, decades. I don't know, since the beginning of time, nothing has ever built, been built on this. It is own commercial. However, I feel that while if I was living next to it, then I would rather look at townhome, something, something residential compared to the side of a commercial building. We are improving the community by building a new attractive development. We're not putting in a liquor store. We're not putting in a marijuana dispensary, you know, something that, that wouldn't be appropriate in this area. This is the direction the life is headed in. Statistically, there won't be enough housing by 2030, which is why you're seeing apartment complexes and these types of complexes popping up everywhere. They're high in demand. And I, I believe that, that this is the, the way of the future. We're showing progress in the area and helping local businesses add additional revenue, such as the mall shop, the vet, the vet down the street, the insurance, truements, the dentists, and all the family, local family-owned businesses, including mine. I believe that we could all use some more revenue, not to mention county taxes, local taxes, federal taxes. I mean, this will bring in, you know, in one year, what, what the lot itself brought in for decades. We're, we're targeting professionals, guys. Each units have offices, meaning that it's targeted at folks working from home. I think that's the new normal now. I don't believe that there'll be a disruption to the community or otherwise. Matter of fact, I believe that they're going to build the community up, because we need to show progress. I'm also a real estate broker. If I'm showing a house in these neighborhoods that are around there and I take a look at the declining street there, I would be worried about the values. And I think you guys saw the, the overgrown lot that, that it usually looks like. We did plan it with the community in mind. We could have proposed an apartment building, which would have been more cost-effective and profitable for us. However, we felt that the townhomes were a nice compromise. So thank you very much. And please don't stop progress and change. This is good. Thank you. Yes, please.
Where's the sidewalk at? Going to be on this picture here?
So the, the laser doesn't work on the TV, but there's actually another one that does show. So it's going to be right in the front. So you can, you can see the white strip and then it continues to go down the grass strip, which is right in the front. And then we'll show you on the, on the side plan.
What is the square footage of the units?
They're going to average about fifteen hundred square feet. And they're going to be two to three bedrooms, all feature office spaces. And they're going to be, they're going to be high-end granite countertops, you know, the, the works. So.
How many parking spaces per unit?
Two parking spaces per unit is what's, what's required by St. Louis County. And then of course, the garage units will have a garage and an additional parking spot.
The sidewalk is shown just in the, just inside the right of way, I believe.
It, it, it goes across, across the front of the entire lot.
Which is currently a medical. We pick that sidewalk up, bring it closer to the exit and take it across the front edge of the right. Southeast portion of the site will actually turn the sidewalk heading back towards the right way, up to the front of the subdivision, Pfizer Hill Estates, Pfizer Mill Estates East. If there's a future connectivity that wants to be made from that subdivision to this sidewalk, then.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Following up on a question about the parking, I agree. The world has changed. There's usually two cars in, in every house, a minimum. Would you have guest parking?
We, we have guest parking in the front left.
Okay. But is that included total of two parking spaces per unit?
No, sir. How many total?
Total of?
Forty-four.
Forty-four spaces.
Forty-four?
Nineteen.
We have six additional spaces.
Six. Other people be able to park adjacent to this? Because that, that's a small number of guest parking at that size project.
Well, the, what, what I've studied as a, as a real estate broker, I don't anticipate people throwing big parties and that, that's just not the crowd that we're trying to attract. So, you know. Yeah. Right. So, but with that being said, we're, we're open to, you know, what, we're flexible. If, if you gentlemen and ladies would require us to do more parking spots, then we'll certainly work on that.
Let's see. Bad one. I can't read my own. What type of materials are the exterior of these buildings?
Yeah. So, so they're going to be a lot better quality in the, quality than your traditional condominiums. Your traditional condominiums are going to be brick veneer in the front. They're going to be vinyl siding around the sides and back. They're going to be wood decks on the back of them. This is where you attract that, that these gentlemen, you know, are, ladies and gentlemen, are trying to avoid. So on my building, I put what's a material called nichihua, which is an expensive material. It's a custom material that can only be installed by a couple of contractors here in St. Louis. That's very expensive. And then the alpolic metal panels as well. Those are imported as well and, and custom made in, in the US by, by union workers. So on this particular one, we'll have nichihua on the front. They'll be wrapped in, in black metal and then there'll be stucco as well.
So the, so the brownish colored panels are prefab panels?
Yes, sir.
And the, and the darker colored panels, are they also metal?
It'll be stucco. And then, and then. Yes, sir. In between the units will be stucco and, and the, the lines running across will be black metal wrapped. You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If you have any pictures of these materials, especially that first material, can you say that material again?
Nichihua, one of them is called nichihua. There's all different types of materials. Now, at this point, when I did my building, there was only one manufacturer. So we haven't gotten quite that far, but it will not be vinyl.
Sure. So I think it'd be beneficial if you send just some detailed photos of those materials, I think would be beneficial.
I just looked it up quickly. Is it accurate that it's a sort of a fiber cement, the nichihua?
That, that's correct. And I'm also considering metal, metal siding, which I have on my phone and I can certainly pass it around to you guys just real quick, if, if you would like, or if I have a projector that I can.
Do we have the light table? If we don't, that's okay, because you can submit it in writing and we can provide it to the commission when you, when you have exhibits.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know how to do that.
That's okay, Mel. You can just submit it as exhibits. No, no, understood. Yeah. No, it'd be beneficial. Yeah. Just to submit it also as, as an exhibit, supplementing your, your presentation this evening. Yes.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else? Being none, we thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in favor? In favor? Being none, anyone representing a group who'd like to speak in opposition? You want to come on down? You can line up and we'll take you one at a time.
Hi, my name is James Clemens. I live on Smizer Mill Estates, the street that would be adjacent to this, on, to the right. I'm basing most of my comments on, on the preliminary site drawings that were provided. I'm not familiar with this, if I'm allowed to try to find one on here.
Sure, you may.
Okay. Let me, let me comment. Well, I'll, I'll go to where I want to be first. That center island there is described in the, in the site plans as being a water, I forget the term, but I think of it as a collection, retention.
It's a BMP water detention facility.
Exactly. Yeah. And in, in the drawing, if I could, I don't know if it's even on here, but, okay.
You're going the wrong way.
I, I thought I would loop around to it. Thank you. My point is, is in that drawing, when we get to see it, it describes it as a, that there's a retention wall. It doesn't say how deep that is. Yeah. Well, that, but then there's, there's also a, a side view of it that shows the elevations. It shows a retentive, that the retention basin has a wall, a retention wall. It doesn't say how tall that is, you know. On the pictures here, it implies that it's flat with nice landscaping in it. Just a six-inch curb going around it. I'd be concerned that if it's like it really says in the, in the site plan, that it would actually be a drop-off. There's no railing, no curb, no buffer between the street and the, and the island, I'll call it. So that's one, one concern I have. The other one is the, the parking. I don't know if you can see it very well there, but the building on the left, well, first of all, there's no sidewalk at all, you know, up against the building. There is on the building on the right. So there's some indication that they know that there should be a sidewalk, but the building on the left does not have a sidewalk. And then the parking, I, I challenge that there's forty-four spaces there. To me, there's one parking space on the building on the left. And I don't know, count them, there's maybe twenty-four on the right. So altogether, there's probably about thirty-four parking spaces. Okay. So I'm, I'm concerned that, well, we brought up parties, but even just the regular residential residence parking, the people on the left, if they've got two cars, they're going to try to find a space on the right, walking around that basin, you know, to get there and not finding one there. I think they'll probably be parking on that street right next to it. And, uh, not finding one there, I think they'll probably be parking on that street right next to it, Smizer Mill Estates, which is already, if, you know, you, you have to wait for somebody to come by and pull over while they go by and you go, you know, past them like that. So that's a, that's a concern of mine.
Mr. Chair, that's three minutes.
I didn't know I was, had a restriction, I'm sorry. Could I? We could probably just a couple of real quick things. Um, there is a, um, let's see. Oh, that, the sidewalk out there in front of the, the development, it's already designated as a pedestrian cycle-type shoulder. So there's no real advantage to getting the sidewalk put along there. That's heavily used already. It's got the stencil on it, you know, with bicycle and the, and the person walking. And, uh, you know, I'm concerned, you know, we talk about the, the tax, uh, increase that you'll see, and, uh, of course, that's a good thing, but I would ask you to consider that. I think overall, you're going to decrease the, the, the assessment value of the houses around it. And so over time, you know, you'll increase here on the undeveloped land, but you're going to over, for the rest of a hundred years, it's, the rest of the properties are going to be decreased.
We really don't look at the tax. That, that, we look at the use of the property.
Very good, okay. I, I was brought up, so that's why I'm discounting that. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else representing a group who'd like to speak?
I'll try to keep this brief. If I do run out of time, please cut me off. I'm just going to start out with my summary. First of all, um, I appreciate Mr. Meskovich's, um, support in letting us view his plans. But having lived in this area and with my neighbors that have been there a combined total of fifty-plus years, there are significant water issues in this area that are not addressed by these plans. Um, the retention basin does a nice job of taking care of the hard spaces. But all of our properties drain to that swale that's in between those nineteen apartment, or those ten apartment units on the right-hand side of this graphic and our backyards. And not all of those drains are taken into account into the plans that are published out there. And that ground is always wet. There's a spring or some high level water table in that area. And we're constantly dealing with water issues. That area is always a marsh. So it's going to be, um, exacerbated by the grading that's going to happen there. And it's going to be a constant mosquito mold and maintenance problem. The second issue is the safety of the people in the area. This is a, uh, very high thoroughfare area, and with all the development from this piece of property and the tree lines, there's going to be diminished sightlines and additional traffic in this area that's not taken into account with this sidewalk that's going to be added to this apartment complex. Um, the reduction in property values was already mentioned. These apartments, um, per Mr. Meskovich's, um, statement are fifteen hundred square feet. Well, anybody can do the math. They're thirty-nine feet by eighteen feet wide. That's thirteen hundred and eighty-plus square feet. These are not fifteen hundred square foot apartments. And several of our neighbors have rental property in this area. Um, the most he could probably get for these is maybe fifteen to eighteen hundred. His estimates of, of the target audience are significantly off. Um, and I think, this is my personal opinion, this is very easily converted to a HUD apartment or subsidized income. There's no storage in these units. There's not enough parking spaces. And there's no basements. So these things are going to end up with a bunch of external storage. They're going to be ISOs and, um, even though the building looks nice, the scale of his drawings greatly im, are very impressive. If you've walked this lot, this is a little bitty tiny lot. The perspective on the views that he's shown are, make it look so much bigger than it is. And then lastly, um, parking problems, um, it's already been mentioned, but if you look at this closely, that parking lot's barely big enough for one car to get through. All of the parking, if anybody has any guests, are going to be parking in our street, or they're going to be parking in the businesses or other private property around there in order to, um, find places for people to park. And lastly, Mr. Meskovich says that that lot behind him is an ISO. Um, we kind of look at it as a nature preserve with great potential, just not for this project. So I would greatly appreciate it if you would vote no on rezoning this from C8 to residential 6AA. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition or with concern?
My name's Jim Schwebby and I live on the third lot down on Smizer Mill Estates. Um, and I have objections. Uh, some of my concerns are based on the elevations. So, once this lot is graded out, and I know, I'm not sure exactly what you guys all take into consideration, but for me on a personal aspect, it is, these units are going to be twenty-six foot high on the backside, looking at their, the drawings that were submitted. They're going to be looking right down on top of us. They're only thirty foot off of our fence, off of our, uh, uh, property line. Um, so it's going to be a big invasion on, on our privacy. Um, I know they proposed trees that you saw in the drawings. My concern is, which I've checked on, Amren has overhead power lines that run parallel with our property lines. And if he plants the trees in there, first of all, it would take years for them to grow up to be tall enough to be any kind of a barrier. Secondly, if they grow up to that height, now Amren, which has their trans, transmission vegetation management program, you're going to be, uh, invading on that. They're going to have to come in and trim them and cut them, so in essence, they're really not going to do anything, you know, to help, to help, uh, create that barrier. So, um, that's, uh, one aspect. Uh, another issue that I see is, you got eleven units down that east side that back up to our property. They're only thirty foot off the line, and now you're going to have eleven more air conditioners. We're going to have a lot more noise. Um, you know, that's going to be a, a, plus you're going to have a lot of people that are coming out. Um, the proposal has patios that come from the thirty-foot point, ten foot out, so now the, these patios are only twenty foot off the line. And that is going to cause, cause additional, uh, you know, noise, um, for us, disturbance for us. Um, again, I had the same concerns about the water. Uh, I live right next door to John, and as I, I'll attest to it, is that, yeah, there's constantly water running through there. And so with his grading, I would hope that the roof's, uh, rainwater runoff would go into the retention basin, but if any of that falls to the backside, it's going to create more problems for us. Uh, the, parking again, I agree with it. Um, you know, if people start parking out on Smizer Station, because there's not enough parking spots, you know, that could be a hazard, because there is a ton of kids and, and cyclists and whatnot that go up and down that street, so that's a concern. Um, even though they talk about putting a sidewalk in, uh, that's not going to change where people will have to park their cars. Um, I really, if you look at the structures that he's got, they don't really fit in in our neighborhood. The design, which is a neat-looking design, maybe they fit in Clayton, but in Fenton, I don't see that that design really works. Uh, I, a big concern about the reduction in property value. I know if I would walk into my house, uh, if I were a home buyer and walked in and went in the backyard and saw these twenty-six foot high wall right behind me, it, it would be a no-go. So, again, that, that I think, uh, would, would hurt the property value. Um, so anyway, I say all that to say, I appreciate, uh, a no vote on the requested zoning change. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in opposition or with concern? Come on down.
Good evening. I'm Brenda Goddard. My husband Steve is here with me. We reside at the corner of Smizer Mill, um, Estates Drive and Smizer Station. So we are right on the corner of this proposal. Um, just, uh, for the record, we have been there for fourteen years. We have two children, an eighteen-year-old who works at the malt shop that you've heard about already many times, and a fourteen-year-old. Um, we have never been against development of this land. That lot has been vacant for a long time. It has not been well-maintained. Sometimes that's true. But we don't think the current proposal is appropriate for this small one-point-three acre land. Aside from the personal concerns regarding proximity to our home, loss of privacy, decrease in property value, excess noise, the effect of the current plan reaches far beyond us and would have an impact at the community level. Many community members walk and cycle, you've already heard this, along the road. And it's not just from our street, it's from legacy, it's from Bentley Manor. Kids come from all around to go to the malt shop, which is a, a business that has been there for fifty years, so it's part of our culture. Our kids come, they cycle, everybody exercises along that bike path. Um, and I am concerned about having such, so many units in that space, so many people, so many cars coming in and out of that area. Um, again, we're not against development of that property, but this particular proposal does not, is just not appropriate for that space. When the schools open, first day of school, half-day school, last day of school, any decent weather day, there are kids all over that place. And so, I mean, Mr. Meskovich's, you know, had, did mention that, but I'm concerned about the safety of the kids with all these additional cars and property and, um, people. So, um, the current plan is concerning from a population density issue, nineteen-two-story units resulting in a large number of people on a small plot of land, increased traffic congestion, parking issues, and reduced safety for our children and families as they pass by. So because of these reasons and those that others mentioned, we request a vote for no.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Um, hi, my name is Dave Greaves. I'm a, uh, my wife and I are the nicer original, uh, buyers in this lot, or this development. We've been there for twenty-six years. I don't have anything really to add to what's been here or what's been spoken tonight, except I point out on the site drawing that the, uh, dumpster area is at the very back. I challenge the, uh, waste disposal people to get their vehicle in and out of there and, uh, not cause a problem with the, the curbing, the other cars in the area. Um, and also, I, I don't, I watched while the gentleman, you know, scrolled through the different, uh, development site, you know, the pictures. I find it interesting that there was no pictures about the, the right side, the eastern side, and to speak to the elevation problem. Um, there's also, and, and I didn't even think about it until this evening, there is a, a plat map that goes all the way back to however long ago. And there's actually a, a road that lives along that, our fence line. Um, it's obviously never been a road. I don't know if that has to be vacated or not prior to this, um, you know, this site plan moving forward. But there is, there is the, that issue too, and I don't know how hard that is to get going, but that road goes all the way down, down the, that property line to the, the bottom of the street. So, that's all I have.
Anyone else? But, speaking of the mic, it's getting recorded.
Uh, my name is Kelly Hock and I live in the, um, subdivision next door. I guess my concern is, on the picture, Mr. Meskovich showed his business with the nice big sign on it. Where is it? There we go. Meskovich Realty Group. In the last two weeks, I guess it is, that sign has come down. And when I did a Google search, I found that it is a RE/MAX Realty Business. So my concern is, if Mr. Meskovich, um, develops his property for the apartments and he decides to sell them and walk away, we're going to have to deal with whoever comes in there. I mean, he can paint a pretty picture of the landscaping and we're going to do this, and we're the ones that are going to be left with it, with a decrease in our property values. Uh, the other thing is, I do charitable work in the area, Valley Park in Fenton. And I do think that what he's asking for a fifteen hundred square foot apartment is not realistic and that they will go to something less. I'm sorry, I'm nervous. That's it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Please don't change the zoning.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
So, my name's Andrew Perkins. Uh, well, the map's done now. I live on like the fifth house down on the left, so, um, I'm really affected by this all as well. I can attest to the water issues. I spent ten thousand dollars already in the last twelve years that I've lived there on, you know, trying to fix the water issues. Seven thousand just on a French drain and then a couple thousand just on some other, like, what can I do to fix it issues? I mean, it's still an issue, a little bit better, but still a big issue. I just can't imagine, especially being the fifth house down, like being where the corner kind, I don't, I don't know how to use this really either. But, I'm, oh, just being down where the grade goes down, you'd be, it's literally like a river. I wish, I should have brought video or something to show you guys, or I'll, I'll definitely send it to you guys of what it looks like during a hard rain. I mean, it's, it's a river in my backyard. So I just, you know, you can say you're going to catch all that water in the middle, but being that it is a, uh, is with the power line company, there's not a lot that can be done underneath those power lines to mitigate water, at least that I know of. So I mean, that's just a huge concern of mine, of the water getting worse. I'm also right by where that dumpster is going to get hot with nineteen people's trash during the summer. That's not something I want to smell. Uh, just like they said, the air conditioner is being loud, all that light, that's eleven houses or nine, however many houses is back there's lights, you know, one or two lights is bright. You know, I enjoy seeing the stars at night. I enjoy not hearing thirty more air conditioners going. And, you know, something I didn't even really think about until the night was the malt shop, um, the amount of kids you see walking up and down. It is not, if, it's when some kid's going to get hit out of that parking comp, complex, in my opinion. Because that's the amount of kids that come and that's the amount of, you know, busy lives of doctors and lawyers, they got to get places quick. And they're not always, not looking at their phone when they're turning on the road. That's just my opinion. Uh, the parking is just the number one thing. It's a joke. Uh, I, I know, I know doctors and lawyers and that, you know, the demographic he seems to be looking for is actually like my demographic, I feel like. And guess what? We do have parties, you know, you're telling me that Super Bowl Sunday, people aren't going to be looking for places to park on Smizer Mill Estates? You gotta be kidding. You can't sit there and tell me that they're going to be allowed to park in a private office building or the malt shop either. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Dave Parisotto. Um, I'm Andrew's neighbor. I'm the, I'm the fourth or the third house. Let the record show, the fourth house. Uh, yeah, and so I, I have a five-year-old, eight-year-old. Very nice kids, most of the time. Uh, my concern is backing up to the, to the houses. They're going to have a view down into the, the houses. I know Jim, he has a pool. I know my wife one day, I hope not, but she might want a pool. She does want a pool. And, uh, yeah, exactly, the air conditioners, I didn't think about that. With the water, the water comes spraying out of the landscaping wall in the back. It's a big water problem. Uh, and it's just going to get worse. And with the appeal of the lowering property value that was mentioned, um, my wife said, you know, come in here, she, if that was building we'd be facing, she wouldn't want to purchase the house. We like looking back, no neighbors, um, back of us, but my wife said she, you know, we'd, we'd move if, uh, that went up. I don't want to move, so hopefully vote no, but.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Denise Greaves and my husband is Dave Greaves. He are, we have both of our names on the card that we turned in. Um, I'm not real familiar with all the building construction and all that, but, um, I just wanted to point out to you all that Smizer Mill Estates Estates is a one-street to point out to you all that Smyser Mill Estates is a one-street cul-de-sac. So when we ourselves have gatherings and all that, our streets fill up. So I just want you to know that it's not a real long street, you know, it doesn't, you know, there's no, you can't cut through, but I just want to plead that you say no on this, because any additional traffic, I walk that street almost every day, and when you see the amount of traffic and the bike trails that is on there, people going, you know, back and forth and the, the amount of young children that are on that street, it just really concerns me. The sidewalk off of the street is, sounds great, but most, everybody walks on that main street with the bike trail. I'm not sure, apologize, I cannot pronounce your last name, apologies, but when he says there's a sidewalk up in front of his building, I'm on that street all the time and I hardly ever see people walking on that side, because that side comes up to Gladiator and Gladiator, you turn right on it and then you, you come out on 141. So that's a busy intersection there. People don't walk on that side, they walk on the side that this building is gonna be on, or these buildings. So again, I plead no, that you do not change the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ain't none with the petition would come back up and like to give rebuttal?
Like, what, what was our timeframe on the rebuttal?
I don't think we have a timeframe.
I think it's five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. I'll, I'll try and summarize, I took notes as, as to people's concerns and a lot of them were, were very similar. And, you know, they're, they're residents of Fenton and they're, they're valid concerns. There's a conversation about water problems. We haven't done any geological testing yet to be able to determine elevation of a water table. If that is determined that there is an issue, we'll have to mitigate for that. They're, they're concerned about the water flowing through that swale. If it's coming down at higher velocities than what it should be, we can do things like install turf mat reinforcement in, in the swale itself, maybe rock check dams, if you will, that will help to mitigate the velocity and make it not an erosive flow, if you will. That should help with some of the water problems on the backside of the building. The buildings themselves, all the downspouts will be piped to the bio-retention facility. That's gonna be required by MSD to treat as much impervious as, as possible, right? The reason why we have it set up this way with the bio-retention in the middle of the site is, we can take everything and get it to the middle of the site from all the impervious area outside of the sidewalk. And then a portion of the entrance is gonna be tipped back towards the street. There's a lot of talk about the existing bike trail.
So, the, the water issue is current. Our development isn't up. They're having water issues with the way the current lot sits. So basically what they're proposing is to keep the lot the same and keep the water issues current. When we put in a new development, MSD in St. Louis County, the first thing they look at is the public around. They protect the consumer. That's why we have folks like you and Power to prevent these things from happening. The water issues are current, not, not our development.
I would also say though, that your development can't add to an existing issue. So if you add to the existing issue, then you're at fault.
The, the intent would be to mitigate any water problems. That's pretty much my job. Make sure that we are handling any increase into the site runoff. So anything that goes above and beyond the existing runoff of that property, we have to handle through MSD. Development will not get approval without MSD's involvement in there. The facility we're, we're presenting is, is a very functional facility. It can be very aesthetic. A lot of people think about the ones they see in Walmart's parking lots, where you pull up and they've just got a, a hole in the ground and there's some dead grass in it. These can be planted very aesthetically. And that's kind of as a benefit to the site, it adds more beauty. I, I heard about the, the walking trail and the existing bike paths and, and everything, and there's a concern about the safety of all the people. Absolutely, when you have cars and people involved, there's, there's safety concerns. Even though there's existing bike paths along the roadway, the sidewalk proposed provides a buffer between the traveling vehicle and pedestrians. Right now, there is a, a white stripe that prevents a car from meandering off and hitting somebody. We're taking pedestrians off the roadway and then putting them with a ditch line between us that's approximately three and a half to four feet deep, that a car would have to go through to be able to get to the, the people traveling the site. So, in my opinion, you know, you're concerned about the safety at, at the entrance, people coming and going to the, to the apartments. We can put crosswalk stripes across the entrance, you know, stop signs right there as you're coming out, you're gonna stop anyway at, at your intersection. But we can put different visible indicators to, to keep people aware that there are people traveling here. And I'm sure if they move into the area, they're gonna take note of how much foot traffic is there. It's actually probably gonna be something that drives them to, to be in that area is the amount of activity in the community.
As far as, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what the talk is of endangering everybody. I live in the community and work in the community, I have the corner office there and I watch people all day long. My kids walk to the same ice cream shop. You know, I don't wanna, I'm not endangering my kids, so not sure what that talk is about. I would be more concerned about the rental home that's across the street from the malt shop, that's got, you know, six cars, that's, that don't start and, and a boat in front of it. You know, we had a picture of it somewhere, but we, we don't anymore, so I'm trying to, to mitigate that out of this area. So to say that I'm not trying to approve it is, is absurd.
Their concern for parking was brought up, you know, during our presentation. We have, I miscalculated, we have 43 parking total. That is not, that includes visitor parking. We could look at ways of parking agreements with the neighboring facilities, shared parking. We can look at possible redesign to try and get more parking in there. Right now, we currently meet the zoning requirement for the parking for this density. I know that was brought up that the density, the number of units on the property seems to be excessive. That again, meets code requirement as we work with Mel to determine the density available for the subject property. That's one of the reasons for the R6, or R6AA.
I hate to keep interrupting you, but you said there's 43 parking spots currently?
Yes.
And there's 19 units and you have portioned two per unit?
So.
So that leaves you five spaces.
Yes, that's correct.
You think five spaces is adequate for?
I, I don't, can't say that it's gonna be for sure.
Does that 43 include the garage?
The 43 includes the garages, yes. Yes, so the garage is considered a parking space in the residence. In the code, a residential facility is required to vehicles for parking. So that does, you know, we are taking that into consideration.
I, I just wanna interject and say that the requirement for townhomes and multiple families is actually only a space and a half per dwelling unit. So they are only, the, on the site plan, they showed that the calculation only requires 29 spaces of them, just, just to reflect what the code requires.
Think that, you know, any subdivision, I could propose to put a small subdivision in and I can't speak to the, how many, how, how many people are gonna come over on Super Bowl Sunday. You know, everybody's gotta park somewhere. The church, the church is overflowed and they have 100 parking spots. And they've called me, asked me if they can park in my building and vice versa. We had a very nice lady that spoke about charitable events. We hold a free photos with Santa event every year. So to say that we don't care about the area and some of their kids might have even come and it, it's, it's a Toys for Tots organization. If you, if you come and bring a, a brandy toy and get a free photo with Santa. So the notion that we're not involved in the community, don't care about the community is, is absolutely false.
I don't think we're saying you don't care for the community. I think what it is, is, I'm, I'm speaking for me myself. I think it's capitalism. I think that you've got money invested in this and you can't walk away from it and you've gotta get some bang for your buck. And I think that you're willing to do that by just about any means necessary, that's my opinion.
Well, to be quite honest with you, I, I do have money tied up in it, but not enough to, to not walk away from it, quite honestly. But, you know, it's owned commercial. I, I could figure out another space to put there, commercial or, you know, whatever it may be, but are we going to run into the same opposition every single time? If I was a resident there, I would preferably not look at the side of a commercial building. My, my home was built, it, it's a big two-story home that over, overlooks, you know, a smaller home. They could have come up here and I guess, you know, been against it, saying that I have windows in the back, or certainly, I could build residential homes there and sell them and not be rentals and they would have windows there. So I'm not sure what the argument is.
An existing facility that's already built, that's in a subdivision, that people knew that they could have a two-story building there.
But they, they also, when they purchased their homes, they also knew that something would be built there at some point.
But did they think 11 units overlooking them would be crammed into that small of a space?
Well, I'm.
Did they really think that? Being rather.
My, my building's one-story and it's 19 feet high. And, and it was approved for 21 feet. And we're, we are at 21 feet as well, an average of two feet under everybody, we're not towering over anybody.
Question. Would you be opposed to redeveloping this property to a smaller amount? Less amount?
Something we could consider. A lot of, a lot, a lot of planning went into this, I've got months tied up into this planning, so whatever is proposed, either by, by the neighbors or, or you guys, we'll certainly take a look at.
Yes, Mr. Haslinger, if I may, I was also listening to some of the residents and I was hoping that you could just address a couple of, some of their concerns. So one of the speakers was also concerned not only about how much water detention, but the BMP design. So he was concerned about essentially BMP that sort of dug too deep with a wall. Can you just speak, can you speak to for this size, what it would really be designed like?
Yes, so that was shown preliminarily. When we're doing a preliminary site layout, we're not getting into every single little detail. So we typically oversize our drainage facilities to guarantee that we're gonna have the room. I showed it as significantly deeper than what is really gonna actually be required. Going back through, after we got through a certain point, I went ahead and verified what my drainage requirement size would be. And I've actually got that as three to one slopes that come down off of a curb and have curb cuts in the curb to allow water to.
Notches into the curb to.
Yeah. So there will be, the, the drive aisles are, are 24 foot wide. That was specifically requested. The code requirement is 22 foot in width. He has 22 feet on his building and he's complained to me numerous times about how he doesn't like backing up in it. So it was important to have the extra two. Really does make a difference when you're backing out, especially with some of the larger vehicles people have. You know, that extra two feet gives you a little bit more room to, to make your turning movement. I know there was a discussion about the trash service and being able to, to service the, the dumpster. That is coordinated with your contracted trash company. We coordinate the size of the can for the demand and then we provide them access and they have specifications for the, the concrete and everything that goes into the trash facility. The entrance is put in as, as one way in, one way out. The turning movement for the truck will, is ran to handle the curb radius that's designed. So the vehicle, the, the service will use, come in, make the turning movement necessary to get to this. These are all things that we, we have to look at when we're laying out sites.
Another question that was brought up is, can you talk a little bit about the Amarin easement, its exact location and some of the, you know, some of the constraints that you'll be operating under in terms of the types of plantings and whatnot that would typically be found in such?
Yes, so there is existing 30-foot wide old roadway access easement to a piece of ground that I believe was originally nine acres in size and was dedicated for a person to have access back behind off of Smyser Station Road. The, looking through all the documents, the, the records indicate that that was for eventually to be a connection made to Smyser Station Road for development of the property. That since didn't happen, Bentley Manor was put in, you know, put into place, they've created the access west of us and, I believe, just on the other side of the malt shop. That easement, as of right now, is, is still existing. We do not encroach upon easement with any of our buildings. Amarin UE does have an existing telephone, or existing power line that runs from the southeast corner to the rear of the property and then traverses the property westerly in an existing seven and a half foot wide easement. I've had conversations with Amarin engineers about relocating the power line because of the proximity to the buildings. Our preliminary discussions are gonna be that it's gonna be an underground cable, but that again, is preliminary, it could wind up that we move a pole and it goes further out. They're actually looking into if they have rights within that easement for their use. So it could turn out that they're actually encumbering the property without easement rights.
Yeah, it may not be dedicated to Amarin, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So this again, is something we're, we're working with, we're working with the water company. I've got plans submitted into them for how are we gonna get water service to the building? We're working with MSD for our water quality and our stormwater mitigations. Amarin AT&amp;T, there's actually a high priority AT&amp;T facility that fronts Smyser Station Road that what I'm told by AT&amp;T would take out California if it got damaged. So, you know, this is stuff that you, you have to consider as you're doing these things. So it, it seems, you know, Mr. Meskovic here wants to slap up some buildings and, you know, make some, make some money and just, and be done with it. I don't, I work with a lot of developers, I don't get that sense from him. I do know some that, yeah, they'll throw a matchbox up as quick as they can. They're doing out in Lincoln County, they're throwing houses up like that. He, he generally wants to improve his area. And he's gonna make some money on it, yes, it's, it is a business. But it is land that he has the right to do something with. I understand neighbors don't like development, you know, I would have reservations of things if you were developing around me. I do work in the industry, so I, I understand when I buy a property and there's vacant lots, chances are something could happen to it. Not everybody knows that or thinks about it, right, when they buy a house.
I think, I think we've pretty much all understand that there's things that haven't been investigated, but some of the concerns of the residents and some of the concerns, I think, that we have, is that many of those need to be resolved before you can make an intelligent decision to vote for or against.
I, I would, I completely agree, that's it.
So, you know, one of the things that keeps coming up is this easement and the marshland that's apparently on the easement, is that, do I understand that correctly?
That, that's the description that I'm understanding as well.
So you have no legal response to treat that or to prevent that? You have, I mean, you, you're not gonna approve an easement that you don't own.
Well, the easement is.
I do own the lot, the lot.
Dedication of rice to a specific party over a parcel of ground. He, he is the owner of the ground. The individuals that own the easement are deceased, so it will have to be tracked down through whatever trust, if one was established for the individual, so on and so forth, to resolve the easement itself. That's why we're trying not to fringe upon it. But he still has the rights to do stuff with the ground. It's just, those people still have that specific right granted to them.
Right, and he owns the easement ground?
Yes.
Yes. And what are your plans to deal with the marshland?
That's what I was saying, we could, we can look into, when, when we do our geotechnical exploration, that will identify if there's a spring or waterway, elevated water table. At that point, our geotechnical department will need to look at how do we mitigate that circumstance, right? If it's a well, or if it's a spring, is it able to be capped? Can we do that? If it's just high water table, you know, what kind of drainage rock do we gotta put in at the base of everything? How, how far down do we have to remediate to make this, you know, a resolvable situation?
Okay, thank you.
That was on the property?
There's not an existing roadway, there's never a road built. There's an easement for access to, like I said, I believe it was a nine-acre parcel on the very eastern side of the property. And it extends 18 lots, I think, up into Bentley Manor subdivision, the subdivision to the, and it runs across the back of all their properties as well. The, the piece of ground, the, the couple pieces of ground that are Smyser Mill Estates, one of the, the pieces of ground that had that easement was part of another purchase and those two were combined to make Smyser.
Yeah, and, and being. Yeah, and, and being that, that they are combined into one lot and, and one owner, MSD will control the water flow of, of that piece as well. Um, many people may not, may not know that it, that it's now been combined, but through recent, uh, research and surveys and things, it has been combined into one lot and MSD will make us control the water, water quality there, uh, because of the residences, uh, in the back. And, uh, they mentioned as well, Ameren goes through there, uh, cleans up, uh, all of that. While I met, uh, met with Mr. Buck and Mr. Schweppe, uh, we spoke about this. And, um, you know, they, they've gotten stuck in that easement before, in that, uh, so-called roadway. It is very soft there. Um, well, if there was a parking lot there, they could certainly just go across the parking lot and, uh, get, get to it easier and not get stuck. However, we have been in contact with all of the utility companies, including cable companies as well. And their engineers are all currently working on, uh, on a solution that, that best fits everybody, including, uh, their, their companies as well. Um, and, and they don't, they don't care about what it costs or what it is. They just tell us you have to do it or you can't get approval. If you guys said go right now, we would be until the end of the year before we could obtain final approvals and even building permits. So, uh, every, every, every step of the way is approved by engineers provided by St. Louis County MSD, Ameren and otherwise.
One thing that residents have brought up is, will these AC units be built on the roof or would they be on ground for each of the units?
We haven't gotten that far yet, um, being that these are preliminary plans. Um, my goal is to keep everything as residential as possible, um, so that the areas aren't disturbed. Um, I don't want to tower, you know, rooftop units on, you know, everywhere and that kind of thing. It's, it's just not my goal here. So, um, you know, the new, uh, high efficiency AC units are extremely quiet. Um, you know, so I don't see that being an issue, um, you know, any more than, than the rest of the neighbors' ACs.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. At this time, we'll take a show hands. Those in favor of this petition, those in favor. Let the record show five, those opposed or with concern. Okay, let the record show 19, and that concludes this petition. We appreciate you coming. And then we'll go to the last item tonight, which is PC 03-23.
I was going to say, yeah.
Can I take me a second?
Yeah, exactly.
Everyone's welcome to watch the next one or you're free to leave if you are not, if you don't want to watch the next one, so.
We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
PC 03-23 Dharma Sharma is a request for a CUP in the C2 for a .41 acre tract on the northwest quadrant of Telegraph Road and West Pottle Avenue. This site is in South County, um, and you can see it outlined on the aerial in red. The land use map shows, um, the surrounding retail development along Telegraph Road, um, including an additional packaged liquor store directly across Telegraph and the single-family and multifamily residential development that is, uh, mainly accessed via Pottle Avenue. Um, you can see some of that development from this second aerial. This is looking south on the site at the public hearing sign. This is looking south down Telegraph Road. Oh gosh, sorry, um, north up Telegraph Road. West along Pottle Avenue. East along Pottle. This is looking northwest at the existing convenience store building. Looking west. Looking east into the site. Looking north. And looking south. And looking south out toward the intersection of Pottle and Telegraph. This is looking north, um, this is the, uh, access drive for the neighboring retail development. And this is looking east along the, the back of the site. And now we'll hear from the petitioner.
Good evening, our. Let me begin with, uh, thanking all the authorities involved in this opportunity to present this upcoming business model for A1 and Spirit. Technically, we are not, uh, applying for the new legal license. It is already existing at 4334 Telegraph Road. It is rental property for us. Oh, Dharma Sharma. So technically, we are not, uh, asking for a new legal license. We have existing location, which is 800 feet away and we are renting the property at right now. And we just would like to move that location to at our own property.
Where you at?
4334 Telegraph Road and we are applying for 4390. Yeah, in the strip mall, yes. So it's about 800 feet away from that location. And we are moving to 4390 location. So basically, I've been in a, this industry for last 20 years and my model is standalone building, very clean and, uh, nice building. And, uh, uh, the, the property we are renting right now, it's very small. It's like a 16 to 18 hundred square feet where it is very congested. People, it's hardly to, it's, it's very hard to walk and everything. With this new opportunity, we will have more, six to 10 more employees. And, uh, it is, uh, our engineers and, uh, all of them have worked very hard with the really nice building in that corner. So being saying that, we are not applying for the new license, it's just 800 feet away. We are just moving to the 4390. And existing location used to be a gas station and the convenience store. So there was a legal license before as well. So that's, I would like to say.
Is there a presentation as well with any photos or? Oh, you're going.
The other way.
The other direction.
This is what I, uh, just said about.
Sure.
This is just the, uh, engineer drawing.
And this is your interior?
Yes, this is interior. This is the front rendering of the A1 and Spirit.
So this would be the existing structure reclad or a new structure?
We gonna, uh, disstart the, the old building and build a whole brand new construction with a $2.1 million investment on it.
The brand new building?
Brand new building, yes, sir.
How many square feet do you have in your current store?
Uh, 1780, 1,780 square feet right now.
And this is going to give you how many square feet?
3,900 square feet, so double the size of it, yes.
Doubling?
I saw on there your landscaping plan. Um, would you click back to your landscaping plan? Yeah, there you go. That's your landscaping plan. Thank you. I think that's beneficial for the commission to see.
Absolutely.
What hours are you operating?
Right now, we are thinking about it 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, but it can be various depending on the.
How many days a week?
We work seven days a week, but Sunday we're going to be open 10:00 to 6:00 PM.
And how many employees?
Currently, we have a four to five employee, but with a bigger space, we will have about at least six to 10 employees, full-time and part-time.
And how many parking spaces do you?
Uh, as far as I believe, 16 parking spots right now.
And are these, both of these entrances, um, bidirectional or is this like a one-way circulation through the site? Is it two-way? Is it two-way? Two-way?
Two-way.
So both the entrances are two-way?
Yes.
And the engineer, you can step up if you would, if you'd also like to make any comment.
Sorry, um.
You're fine.
So, uh, while Gary's coming up, I just want to point out that the petitioner, you can see from the, the site plan that the building is, is very close to the streets. So if the CUP was granted, they would subsequently, uh, need to petition the Board of Zoning Adjustment for relief from the setback requirements, which they.
Yes.
They had indicated.
A, a question. Talking two-way on both entrances, but. It's an exit off of Telegraph. That's going to be very hard for people to pull in. To pull in from.
State, state your name for the record.
Sorry, it's Gary Kimble. Yeah, with, I, to be honest with you, I don't believe, if I remember correctly, that there is an island on Telegraph to not allow you to turn onto, onto that property from the right.
There's no island, there's no island.
There isn't, okay. Right. Well, if we have to, we can make that a ride out only. And make everybody come off a potter.
Yeah.
Signage at all?
Yes, that's going to be completely new signage with a really nice decorative as you see.
So only wall signage or are you proposing a freestanding?
No, 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 freestanding, just on the wall. It's, it's going to be on the, on the wall.
What about lighting? Some lights on the building or?
Just normal lighting, whatever is required by the city.
I think you actually have your lighting plan on here as well. I saw the photometric plan, if you want.
I don't know if it's on there.
There you go.
Oh. Yeah, there you go. It's basically just wall packs.
Exactly, okay.
What is the possibility of putting the structure where the parking is, flipping that?
We originally started out that way.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and it didn't work well and then because of the building lines that are there. And then on the backside where the, uh, the neighbor is to the north, there's a vertical wall there already that the existing building is actually part of that vertical wall.
The building is part of it.
The building is, yes. It's got an extended foundation.
Okay.
So we were going to fix that with a nice retaining wall and leave that there, but move the building away from that in case something happens and it goes down. We want to put it closer to the, to the street.
Yeah.
And it, and it helps out that way. And it also gives us more area in the front for parking and drive aisles, doing it this way versus that. What's that?
The visual effect of this is not as good with it being.
Uh, I believe they're planning on doing something on the backside to make it look nice to where, when you drive out.
I'm talking about it just being so close to the street.
Oh. Well, actually, I believe when we.
We discussed it.
We discussed that and.
Um.
Thought it would be better this way than the other way.
What, what I was going to add also was in the original plan where they did, uh, reverse this, the orientation, uh, the parking wasn't going to meet the parking setback. So either way, the, the site is so tight that they were going to have setback issues, um, either way.
Better solution. With it giving up the, the setback as opposed to this? That's my opinion. Picture of, um, or is this layout that's up there, is that offices the whole piece of ground?
Yeah.
What about a buffer for the, um, residents that are next to them?
That access drive to the strip, uh, separates this parcel from the residence.
The, the drive here at the top.
There's a drive here as well.
So north of, on here to the north is the multi-tenant strip. And to the right, there's still that access drive. So the parcel, the parcel to the north hugs this parcel.
And that access drive to?
To the, uh, the retail center.
You, and we have an aerial, we can actually bring up at the, at the start of the.
This, this, uh, the, if you go back one more, Gary, that's the, so to the, to the east of that are the back of the residences.
Okay.
So you can see here that, you can see here that sort of, uh, the contours and the, and the retaining wall.
Kind of real attractive.
It is sort of back, that kind of an alley.
Show the whole thing. Shows the back.
Right, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. At this time, is there anyone representing a group or an individual who'd like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone representing a group or individual like to speak in oppo, opposition or with concern? Come on down.
Thank you. My name is Jack Swanson. I own the shopping center that wraps around this, uh, property. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to the business being there. I'm opposed to the site plan. I think that, that, uh, it's backwards, it will be unattractive. Um, and I'm not opposed to the, the tenant, he's my tenant now. He's been a great tenant for the last 10 years. Yeah, God, he's a good businessman. But, uh, I was going to say lousy architect, but I'm not going to. I shouldn't do that. Uh, but, uh, I think that, that the, one of the problems that I have, that he has is Telegraph Road, known as the Telegraph Speedway. Um, to try to enter, I have three drives out of my shopping center. One at the Dairy Queen, one down at the, on right, right off, right at the back of this property. And then the, the, the property that comes out and then the, the one that we, he showed up there that comes, uh, out to Pottle. Uh, and people cannot turn out of my center most of the time, except in the middle of the night. They can't turn left to go south. You know, it's, it's impossible. And that's the, that's the beauty of that drive that comes out to Pottle because they can turn right onto Pottle, go to the light and have the light to either go across Pottle to the east side or to go down, uh, Telegraph Road. The way this is laid out, uh, that I, I've only seen that, that one drawing that was on there, I think there's a site problem. There's a site distance problem that building, uh, built right almost on the property line, uh, is going to make it difficult for someone, a, a lot of my customers, uh, come out that way. And even, many of them even come out that way and turn right so they can turn right at the light because getting onto Telegraph going north is dangerous, uh, at, uh, many times. And as you all know. And as you all know, Highway 270 is right there. And there's an awful lot of traffic, an awful lot of several gas stations, you know, we've been through, in the 50-plus years we've owned that, you know, we've had a lot of things. We had dirt cheap in our center to start with. Paul Taylor wanted a bigger store, we didn't have a bigger store for him, he built it, you know, no problem. He was a good tenant for ours. I mean, retail tenants are not forever. I have no objection to these folks trying to get a bigger, better store, but I don't think that the way they're doing it and setting it up. The other thing that I'm concerned about, and, you know, small liquor stores, all liquor stores, plaster their windows with beer signs and liquor signs. And I'm afraid that with the temptation will just be too great to have that however, 90, yeah, 80 feet, 50, you know, 100 feet or so of wall right up on the street. It's gonna be too tempting to plant signs on it, to put liquor signs on and saying, hey, we're a liquor store, and we'd like you to come in and buy from us. I would, I think that that problem could be taken care of if they turned the store around, put the back to my property, which isn't going to bother me, because there is that almost 15-foot wall there, which incidentally, we built, well, we sold a little bit of property to Mobil when it was a Mobil station, because they were losing too much space to the hill. So it cut down on the amount of the hill, gave them more space on that small lot. So that's really... That's my concern. It's not with the liquor store, it's not with the owner of the store. I've appreciated getting his rent for 10 years, and I'll get somebody else's rent. You know, that center has just kept going. I mean, Dairy Queen just celebrated a couple of years ago their 50 years in business with the same family, the same people running it, same lady running it. I think she's kind of turned it over to her daughters now, but there's a lot of that down there. It's been a great investment for us, it'll continue to be a great investment for us. And, but I think that this is causing more problems to to the customers than it is to me. And, you know, I don't, I don't have a problem, as I said, I don't have a problem with them moving out. I say, good luck to you. And for his business, he'll have a nicer-looking store. And liquor stores have, you know, a lot of nice-looking liquor stores have been done. So that's basically my concern. I'm not opposed to... Of course, I'm opposed to losing a tenant, but that happens, you know, that's life.
Thank you so much for your comments this evening.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Bill Tanner. Work for Ryhan Properties. We're the property management company of the retail property to the north of this location. I work closely with Jack. I'll reiterate some of Jack's comments about, you know, the site plan. We're not opposed to the use, but opposed to the plan. Primarily the signage on Pottle. The site lines from our customers and visitors coming out of our property onto Pottle to the red light at Telegraph and Pottle. We also feel that the trash enclosure, to be serviced by a large trash truck or removal company, will not have the ability to pull in straight and reverse out. The current location is designed where it's actually inside the property, and it pulls in and picks up, and then pulls out, and then can get out onto the property. It's hard to the site plan here. So right now, a trash truck would come into their enclosure there, pick straight in, then pull out, and then drive out the Telegraph. Or I guess they could, you know, reverse out and then come out on the Pottle. If it's right there where the clothing box is, right there, it will be difficult for a truck to pull in there. It will block the entrance for a few minutes while it picks the container up and then backs out, almost backing up into their building. So I would definitely take a look at that. I also would like to see elevations of, you know, are they planning on leaving the current fence there? Are they putting a new fence? What type of fencing material they plan to use? And/or railing, is it gonna be metal, is it gonna be wood? Are they gonna have the guardrails there if the parking is allowed to be up that retaining wall? Also, they mentioned the retaining wall being revised or reconditioned. What type of material are they planning on using? Block? Are they planning on using the retaining wall that is adjoining our properties? Or are they building it further up the hill? Let's see, going back to that photo. There, not too far. But you remember with the chain-linked fence, is that staying on, or is that leaving as well? Also would like for everyone to be aware, we're pretty certain that the underground storage tanks for the former gas station are still on-site. Those, we would like, you know, given that the building is probably going on top of them, I would assume that they're pulling them out of the ground. Is there a plan to do so? And to work with the appropriate authorities. I've drawn a blank on the EPA, I believe, heads that up. They're gonna need a plan for that. Is that embedded in their construction scope? And would want you to take a look at that, as well as make sure that the groundwater is clean and properly monitored and mitigated as necessary, if anything comes up unclean. What else? Think that pretty much... So definitely want to take a look at those tanks and what's underneath the ground. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, petitioner would you like to come back up? Give a rebuttal to what you've heard?
Dharmesh Sharma. Jack, I didn't know he was here. This is the first time. We actually met 10 years ago. But thank you so much for the comment. Couple of things, I heard that the signage, the beer signs and everything nowadays, St. Louis County, St. Louis City, even St. Charles, they have ordinance. We can put certain percentage of the signage of the window and everything. Our model of the business is not just a typical corner liquor store. This is a well-established, high-end wine and spirit. We are more towards bourbon kind of clubs and stuff like that. So it's not what we think in just a typical corner liquor store. This is gonna be high-end and mid-range kind of alcohol selling. So we have two options, I'll be too honest and to the point. We can have an existing property, live as it is, have, regardless, we have to remove the tanks, because we are not in the gas station business anyway. So we are in the process to removing the tank. We are just getting the beads and getting the permission and all those things. We can have existing building as it is, clean up a little bit, put a new parking lot, and just move out from there. Or we would like to have a new property, brand-new property, with whatever the city's requirement. It's not something what I would like to do. Definitely, whatever the city have their ordinance, we 100% follow that, that's why we have architects, that's why we have engineers. And we will produce, we are approximately thinking $2.1 million building in that little corner, so that's, the street look nice. And of course, yeah, there is a parking issues or the going in and out, they're gonna... But we can follow the city step by step, and we can produce the nicer, cleaner building in that lot. Or we can have existing building, we can do the renovation, so all kind of question is just go out of the way. So I'm trying to invest the money since we have bought the property, so we can produce a brand-new building in that corner. Thank you, sir.
Questions?
I just had a couple of points. Can you, I'm assuming that the code will also require that if, you know, there's a guard rail, anytime that there's some sort of, you know, making sure someone can't fall over, because I know that was...
Right, yeah, we haven't gotten that deep into this yet. This is just for the conditional use. We've put this plan together, showing what we wanted to do. We haven't gotten into the full design part yet.
Okay, and the retaining wall, are you thinking that you're gonna need to rebuild it in any way or largely use it in place?
Mostly use what's there and replace what's needed with what, like existing there. Right now, it's just a structural concrete wall. It's not a segmental block unit. So we'll replace what we need to there.
And have you, and this may be a step too early, but have you looked at the types of fencing that you would put in a site?
Not at this point, so...
Would you be opposed to decorative site-proof fencing, or decorative at least?
Definitely. It's gonna be really, really nice building. See, this is the reason, as Gary says, this is the initial stage. Once we are at least some point that we are confirming that we have a liquor license availability, we can submit the full sets of drawings and everything, which is go by the city's ordinance, whatever is required.
Will you be selling anything besides liquor?
No, sir. We are particularly in...
Tobacco?
Yes, tobacco, yes. Tobacco is gonna be there.
Lottery tickets?
Lottery ticket, yes. Oh, sorry. That's kind of combo pack goes with it, the liquor store, so... But our more toward, you can see our other models. I'm in this business for 20 years, so we are typically on a high-end and those kind of bourbon things. That's what we mostly like to sell in that area.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Coming back up. At this time, we'll take a show of hands, of those in favor of this petition, those in favor. But the records show four, and those opposed are with concern, but the records show two. And that concludes this hearing.
Mr. Hilsinger, before the commission adjourns, I'm not sure if everyone got the email. You may have noticed we didn't have an executive meeting before this. We had a noticing snafu, so we could not hold the meeting. But if everyone is available, I've put a 4:00 p.m. video conference executive meeting on for tomorrow. I know you all probably have a date to go to for dinner, so hopefully we can get it done at 4:00. But I've sent that, but I will remind everyone tomorrow morning as well.
Hey, we need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. Please have it. Tomorrow afternoon?
Thanks, everyone.